Twenty eighteen at six P M. Blah, 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 blah. There's no public hearing part. This meeting is a work session only, generally does not include public comment. I guess we do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yeah.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
And Susan Walke.
Here.
I imagine we should include our city attorney and...
Richard Appicello, city attorney.
City manager.
Ron Chandler.
Thank you very much. Discussion items, project list review, city attorney. All yours, Mr. Appicello.
Okay, so I sent you, there's a council communication in the packet which basically tells you what I think maybe my top ten priorities are currently, but these are really, as I explained in the council communication, I don't write everything down on this list because what happens every day is people come into my office and ask me for legal advice and they ask me to review a contract or write them a contract or review an ordinance or write an ordinance. So a lot of the times what I do day to day doesn't make it onto a list because it's in and out fairly quickly. But there are times that the council or the manager thinks about doing a project or something in my experience comes up and I ask the council, I can't just write an ordinance on my own, I have to ask permission from you or get permission from the manager to do an ordinance. But in my experience, I've brought up things over the years and said, what do you think about doing this? And the council said, yeah, that sounds okay, you can work on that when I have time. So there's really been an ongoing list, it hasn't changed too much over the years, and some of the larger projects are on there. Now, the list is confidential in the sense that, not that's, not what's on the list, but rather the explanation of why. And I gave the example in the council communication that I might explain that we should amend a certain ordinance because there's been a court ruling or there's an argument that it's unconstitutional, and I don't want to necessarily broadcast that. So that's why the list of my projects is confidential. But there are certain things we can talk about and what I probably need most of you is what each of you think of the, I don't know how many pages there were, fourteen pages of projects. What are you interested in? And if you can give me some idea, I'll write it up and then at the, at a meeting where you can take some action, I'll say, here's the, what I sense are the priorities that you've given me. So with that, I'll just tell you that, again, I'll review what my priorities are.
While you're doing that, sorry, you'd mentioned you wanted to make a brief announcement.
I did. So we had actually advertised for tonight a public hearing pertaining to the CMGC for the police building. That actually needs to be from next week, and so before you leave, we'd like you to, just to make an approval motion to continue the public hearing until next week.
Can we do that at a work session?
This was, we did not put it on today's agenda, but it was advertised for today, and there's a rule, under your council rules, that if we're not having a, in this case, a special meeting, it would automatically be continued, but I think we need to announce that that item will be held, a public hearing will be held on June eleventh.
Thank you, my mistake, we just need to announce that. Yeah, we just need to announce that.
Okay, so one more time.
So we had advertised a, an agenda, a public hearing for tonight for the contract manager or construction manager, general contractor for the police building. That public hearing will actually be next week on the eleventh during your regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you, and thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, appears, my council communication does not appear to be in the packet. So basically, it says what I told you just a few moments ago, but the list that, where I had prioritized was basically to say, and this is in order...
And Richard, if I could get you closer to the mic.
Okay, sorry. In order, dangerous building orders, we currently have two. We need to finish compliance agreements associated with those cases, there's four of those. TAF property acquisition with or without prospective purchaser agreement is number two. Sign ordinance review, which is going to the planning commission on June nineteenth, is number three. Charter franchise ordinance review is number four, and that's been with outside counsel, and I believe I'm finally getting it back. Social media policy is number five. Development agreement ordinance, which sets forth minimum requirements for the REFAI properties and annexations with a form agreement is number six. Form incentive agreements for business housing development is number seven. Comprehensive right-of-way regulation is number eight. Records management and retention is number nine. Presentation to council on court of record options is number ten. Number eleven is complete, closed, previously approved land exchanges, we have two that are incomplete. Urban growth management agreement, basic and advanced, is number twelve. Annexation standards, number thirteen. And amend SDC ordinance to address abandonment is number fourteen. And I know I have a lot more projects than that, and I apologize, you guys did not get this council communication?
Could we get a copy of it, though? I couldn't write fast enough to keep up with your list.
You want to just make a copy of that list or the whole thing?
No, oh, that's cool, that's fine. Now, work sessions, we, I should say, we suspend the need to get the attention of the chair, unless you get out of hand, and then...
I apologize, I thought it was being added to the electronic packet and it didn't get added.
I have a little question. On the bottom of page one, top of page two, it appears that those two items are exact same thing, but one's coded green and one's coded red.
Actually, no, the, the urban growth men, oh, you're right. Yeah, the...
There's basic and advanced.
There's basic and advanced, that's it. There is not too advanced.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did...
And are you rating that high or average?
I'm kind of rating it high. I was higher a couple of weeks ago until the, the building division thing fell apart.
Right, right.
So it could probably be downgraded, given that, but we're still going to have to deal with that within the next year, so...
Could you fill me in on the social media policy? You're talking about as it concerns employees or the public?
Well, no, mostly it has to do with the city's use of social media. In terms of, and this is something that, that's really administration and I'm assisting, what we did was we went and looked at some social media policies from other cities, and I don't remember which one, I think it was, it might have been Portland's, but I gave a couple of them out, and one of them I gave to Ron, I said, I really liked, and he said, that looks good, let's try to work from there. So I've been using another city's policy to, tailoring it to us. And so we've, it has to do with city departments using social media. Are they making sure that if they do things on social media that they are complying with Oregon public records retention? So are we backing it up? If we create a Facebook page, are we making sure that we're not discriminating and if we're, are we allowing comments, are we not allowing comments? So that's the, the kind of thing. And we have a lot of social media things going on, especially like special projects like the visioning and things like that. And so it's been a concern that we make sure that those contractors comply with public records law. In fact, I think when the VCB recently issued an RFP for someone to do a contract on their webpage, they pulled it back and did an addendum to say, wait a minute, you guys need to address Oregon public records law because they hadn't addressed that. So we, that's what it's about, and to make it consistent throughout the city so we're not, you know, VCB is doing one thing and everybody else has their own...
Okay, but it doesn't dip into HR policy as far as what staff does on their own?
Well, that's a little different, it's, it is more of a personnel policy idea of, this is more about what you're doing as a city employee on a city webpage, not on your off-time posting things on your own website and then possibly getting in trouble with the HR director or whatever because you've done certain things. So that's, that's not what I'm addressing. This is, has to do with the city's use of social media, not individual employees using it on their own and then getting in trouble because they've done something that, or posted something that, you know, may get them a disciplinary action.
Okay, thank you. Jump in if you got something.
Okay. I have a question. I like your list. Can we talk a little bit about some of these, though, so I can understand what it is you're doing?
Sure, I'll just give you the caution I gave in the memo, is that I don't want to talk about why certain things if I'm disclosing something that would give somebody an idea, hey, let's sue because, you know, city attorney thinks that they're exposed there. But go ahead and ask...
Just from your list, I just want to understand it a little bit better. Number six?
Tell me what that is.
Development agreement ordinance.
Okay. So development agreement is authorized by ORS Chapter ninety-four, and it's basically a negotiated agreement between the city and a developer. We actually considered one a couple of years ago with the Logan Park development, if you recall. And part of the reason for using a development agreement is it gives you more flexibility as a city. As you know, we're subject to, in development, various constitutional constraints, notably Nolan and Dolan exactions. We can't exact more than what is rationally related to the project or roughly proportional to the impacts of the project. So one of the benefits of a development agreement is, in a negotiated agreement, they've entered into this negotiation and you can get more than what you could legally impose if it was just a straight development approval, so...
Sorry, when you say more, are you talking about money?
More exactions, more consideration on their part. So let's say we wanted more roads built or more open space dedicated. We could justify, we can use the negotiation of development agreement to justify getting more, and, and usually it gives benefits. So one of the examples of a development agreement in St. Helens was, we allowed in our development code you to, you could average the buffer area around a wetland that had to be protected instead of having to comply with the fifty-foot buffer. So you could have a fifty-foot buffer if you were a straight subdivision, but if you were using a development agreement, you could have an average fifty-foot buffer. So it could be smaller in one area and larger in another area. And this, this provided flexibility for a developer to design their project in a more creative way. So that was one of the benefits you got. And in exchange, we would ask for maybe a little bit more land to be set aside for conservation or whatever, or more streets or streetlights or whatever it was. It provides a more negotiated development approval. And the reason why that's important to you is that you have these development offerings right now, and, and having some idea of, of framework to negotiate these development offerings for staff, and again, we're not talking about the exclusive negotiated agreements, we're talking about what it is that you're going to end up with, with, in a negotiated agreement with a developer. Will you get low-income housing with an affordability covenant? And what will they get in exchange for that? Will they get a density bonus or things like that? So it provides a framework, again, it's established in Oregon statutes, and you're given permission to, you're authorized, and you can do it under your charter anyway, but you're authorized to write your own ordinance and say, hey, we want to use development agreements, and our complaint even refers to development agreements. And, but you can give a little bit more certainty to a developer of what it's going to look like. So in other places I've worked, we created standard form development agreements, and so you would, if you go back and you look at the Logan Park development, as it came in, that pretty much represented the standard form you would see. And that form is, is consistent in, across many states, California, Florida, and Oregon use real close to the same format. So it, but it does provide more predictability, so they aren't seeing it for the first time when they get that first document from us.
I have a follow-up question to that also, on that same subject. I just want to know what, what the reference is to annexations? Does that make, I mean, what is, what's your reference?
One of the things about annexations is unless you have some annexation standards, you're kind of subject to your, any comprehensive plan policies you may have, and then if you don't have anything specific, you end up just following the state law. So example, in Ashland, they have some specific land development code provisions about annexations. If you're going to annex to the city, you're going to have to provide a certain percentage of affordable housing, meeting a certain criterion. And a development agreement can be used as the mechanism to enforce that requirement. So for example, when we considered the Logan Park project, one of the things staff was asking for was a commitment on the part of the developer to provide some workforce housing. And we got into a little bit of a dispute about, well, how much? How much is enough? One, one affordable unit for, for every five market units, one for ten, what exactly are we looking for? So you can, in a development agreement ordinance, or as Ashland did in their annexation standards, say that here's the minimum affordable, you know, workforce housing you shall provide if you're going to come in and ask for annexation. And it's been used, a development agreement is simply used to combine them to that promise. So the, again, Logan Park was proposed as part of an annexation as well, and they were kind of trying to bundle in one document, which is, which is processed to you. It was kind of like a, taking all the necessary plan amendments and, and code changes and bringing it all before you at the same time in a, in a contract. So that's why it's important. It's, it's used, I've seen it used in that context.
I have another question.
Feel free.
Okay. Could you explain the form incentive agreements for business housing development?
Where is it?
It's number four.
I see that, but where is it here?
Incentive agreements?
Yeah, and if you could also let us know what page on your colorful list so we can...
Yeah, on the colorful list, I'll, I'll find it eventually, but I, I changed the wording a little bit, kind of consistent with discussions.
Because I don't see form incentive agreement.
But the idea is, are there mechanisms we can use to provide incentives for development, whether or not it's housing or business? And, and one of the things I've done, I believe it was in Osceola County, Florida, we had a retention, benefits for a retention of employees. So if you created jobs or you retain jobs, we could give you various incentives, and it, so that was the, the idea. Page eleven is what Kathy's telling me. Yeah, and it was something I had pitched at Urban Renewal when we first, when I first got here. Page eleven is called incentive agreements.
Okay.
Employment generation, employment retention agreements. And again, it's consistent with the idea that if you're going to bring people here, what kind of incentives can you build in a development agreement to get them to come here and get them to stay here? So it's consistent with the whole thing about the development offering and the flexibility you, you use a development agreement to achieve. So it's, you know, what can we give them? Can we give them density? Can we give them flexibility and certain requirements? Can we give installment payments on STCs? What kind of flexibility can we give in exchange for employment generation or retention?
So if I could follow that up, so what you would do with this is just do some research? And, I mean, what is it, why is this on this, what, what do you see this meaning to you for your work?
Well, I, I think if you're willing to have me spend time, and at some point, somebody said this is a good idea, probably David Hawker, and said, yeah, you can have it on your list. If, if you want to spend time, if you think this is the time, because we have this development offering thing going forward, then maybe we should look at what options are out there for us. There are certain tax, you know, benefits that are available, but, you know, what other benefits have been used in Oregon? Again, when I've worked in Osceola County, not Osceola, sorry, Hernando County, Florida, they had a very aggressive business development, you know, they were just very aggressive, going out and getting people and bringing them to the, to the city, and they would get them by enticing them with either land or not, very nice lease options. They had airport property, it was an old, you know, nineteen forties military airport that got, was converted for industrial use, and they were going out and getting people and using tax incentives and employment agreement incentives to get people to come. So if, if what you're doing now is trying to use your land to get people to come and build here or to bring businesses here, what other mechanisms do we have? So that was just part of that whole process.
So if I could ask the third question about that same thing. So this is under Urban Renewal, obviously, so then you would work with Allison closely? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how this work rolls out.
Yeah, I think it would just be another tool in the toolbox to try to bring people here.
Okay, thanks. I have another question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll just keep talking.
Okay.
Okay. Number ten, this is the presentation to council on court of record options. I just have a question, if, if we even have a consensus to have you work on that, because I don't, I've only, I don't, I'm not sure there is.
Again, this, this has been on my list since probably the two thousand thirteen, and probably comes out of something, discussions I had with David Hawker. And basically, at the time, it wasn't right to look at this, but I know there is some interest, but if you guys want to take a head count and say no or yes, but at this point, you haven't even heard what your options are. I mean, I've mentioned this over the years, that if you try a case in municipal court and the city wins, then the defendant can file an appeal to circuit court and try the entire case over again, as if, de novo, as if nothing had happened here. So that is, when you have an active municipal court, when you're prosecuting or a lot of violations or a lot of crimes in your municipal court, that can be a real headache because you end up doing the exact same thing twice. And the second time, they know what all your arguments are, and they have all your evidence, and stories change. And so in places I've worked, we've considered whether or not to become a court of record. A court of record simply requires a judge who is a member of the Oregon State Bar and a recording system. If you have those two things and you pass an ordinance, then they cannot file an appeal and get a de novo trial in the circuit court. Their appeal will go to the court of appeals, just like every other criminal or violation case would go. So it's, in terms of efficiency, it makes your court more meaningful. They used to say that your municipal court becomes like a trial run for the defense attorney, and if, you know, if they win, great, if they don't, they get another shot down in the circuit court. Now, we don't prosecute a lot of crimes here. In fact, although I, we have jurisdiction to prosecute every misdemeanor that occurs within the city limits, we're not. So if we became a court of record, we might do more prosecution, because I think then we'd be able to realize the benefit of that. Right now, most of the misdemeanors go to circuit court, and if you want to take some burden off of the district attorney, you would keep more misdemeanors here. So this would apply to, but it does apply to violations as well. So if you get convicted in muni court of a violation, you can file an appeal and have a de novo hearing in circuit court. So, but you've not had this discussion. Again, this is going back, it's been on my list since like two thousand thirteen.
In the explanation of that item in your list, it says since nineteen ninety-nine. What happened in nineteen ninety-nine that changed things?
There was a, a very large reorganization of Chapter one fifty-three, but one of the things that happened is the statute on, on courts of record was amended to remove the prohibition, you couldn't have a court of record unless you were at least fifty miles from the county seat, and they removed that limitation in ninety-nine.
So it was a change to state statute?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many of these appeals have come through?
Oh, we, well, you know, if there are appeals now, they're, it's going without my knowledge because I haven't seen any violation appeals, and there have been no criminal appeals. So if you...
That's four years, five years now in college?
Yeah, five years.
Five years, okay. Doesn't seem to be that big of a priority.
Well, in terms of, if you want to change the character of your municipal court, I realize that some people don't want to change the character of your court, but if you want to change the character of the court and prosecute more on a local level, then a court of record would be a good idea. But we haven't had that discussion.
Yeah, maybe later, I'd like to flesh that out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, Richard, I guess to help me, or I went through this, I was on the mindset of you thinking that we were, we were concerned, had expressed a concern of things that we were putting on your plate, getting in the way of, you know, your, your list. And we kept, as a council, kept talking about, well, just share with us your priority list and we'll help you out, because some of this stuff clearly can be nixed or, you know, draw a line, and it's just for a remembrance, not necessarily any work at all. And I'm wondering if, if you did that, you know, a takeaway from this work session was, you know, I, I understand your color coding, but to go to what's important to me, I went through this and said, top of my list would be anything that's housing. Getting in the way of housing, would encourage housing, would affect housing, first and foremost, and so I could take a look at those kind of things rather than kind of have them scattered And then some of these things, and again, you're talking to a novice, so I apologize, but seemed like slam dunk or just kind of monitoring, like the charter franchise, you know, having followed that, you know, kind of monitoring, we brought in a specialist and that kind of stuff. So it's on the list, but to be pushing others, not necessarily your work. And so I, I think there's some of those in here as well. And then there's some duplications, signs and that kind of stuff, and it showed up a couple of times.
Yeah, there were two things, at least two things that were on here twice.
And then, you know, so why, what I was trying to do was condense the fourteen pages down to, you know, some bigger categories, because I'm not sure I agree with your priorities that you've put in your communique, matter of fact, I don't. Some of these I'd, I'd pop up, but like TAF property acquisition, we're going to have a work session, executive session a little later, but clearly it's, it's a, has been a monitor rather than worry too much about it because it's out of our hands. You know, I, I don't understand the annexation piece, and even on your, one of your lists was, you know, annex East Devils Lake State Park over on page 11. I put a line through that. So I guess I was trying to refine it a bit.
I can certainly go through and, and be more critical and, and drop the ones I haven't heard anybody talk about for a while. And certain of the things on here are monitor and like monitor to update, like the public contracting forms and things like that, that I would do as a matter of course. Again, this list is evolving and some of it is me saying, wait a minute, we need to do something, and others are things that you or the manager have suggested.
Well, and, and if I can, because what was it on here for me, was we've talked at different times about, you know, monthly rentals and the health and safety of monthly rentals. You know, and I, I remember we had testimony with somebody had the mold all through their rental and, you know, couldn't get any cooperation, you know, so I didn't see that. The other, we've, we've had talk about looking at reducing sewer fee during the summer for people who are doing excessive landscaping or garden watering, where their water, because we're, we're certainly getting them on the water side, but they're not putting anything into the sewer system. You know, so, and then a, a recent one with just the, you know, offshore oil drilling resolution. You know, to me, those are the, these are the kind of things that I thought we were clogging up your, you know, work schedule with, and you were debating which one of the counselors you were going to please.
Well, I, I've told the story that, you know, I used to have a counselor come into my office in St. Helens and tell me, you know, I need you to do this, and then this and this, and, and then when he would leave, I would promptly do nothing, because I don't do anything in response to one. So I wait until there's some consensus. Again, then the charter says I'm supposed to get direction to do an ordinance, either from you or from the manager. Now, I, I guess it was probably not on here, but maybe it is. The, within the last couple of weeks, I had a discussion with the police chief and the manager about the registration of distressed properties ordinance that we did a couple months back. And the police would prefer that the finance department be the entity that does the registration part. They'll still do the code enforcement part, but they, they're not set up to do registration. And so that's, that was something that I just went, I told them to go talk to the manager, and if the manager said, go ahead and write that ordinance, I would write it. So he said, yeah, go ahead and do that, so.
Is that, this number one, is that what's that? Dangerous building ordinance?
No.
Oh.
No, this has to do with distressed property, and it, I don't think it made the list.
Okay.
But that's something that just happened in the last week and a half. The dangerous building thing is more related to, like, your monthly rental thing. What, what happens is we get reports of bad conditions, and sometimes, this is what happened with the, the property down here on 101, where we had a renter contact us and say, you know, hey, I'm having a problem, and the renter gives us, gives permission for us to enter, and we see a dangerous condition. And so then we go after the owner, the landlord, for a dangerous building. In that case, five people were living in that building, and it was declared dangerous and ordered vacated, and eventually it was torn down.
But this is where I'm confused then, is, is it an ordinance? Could you, we've got an ordinance in place, or is it enforcement? And that's where I, I wonder about a lot of these things, if I can, to the, jump ship to the sign ordinance. And we, you highlighted, and I agree, political signs to me is a quick fix. Unbeknownst to me, but you know...
Well, part of this, some of, not all my projects are ordinances. I mean, I, I actually like doing ordinances. I, it's something that I enjoy doing, but you're correct in that we have a, in title 15 of our code, we have adopted the uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings. The council even has made local amendments to that by ordinance, and we use it. And a lot of my job is writing orders for the building official or for the planning director or for other staff members. I, I write resolutions and orders or review them. And so I have, for example, an inspection report from the building official now that I have to turn into another dangerous building order. So that is something that, you know, we have real people that are removed from their dwelling. So it has a real priority in the sense that people are out of doors because of this. I, I believe the one I mentioned with the five people, there were three children involved, and, and there was actually a, Mr. Hawker actually found some relocation money. I don't remember where it came from, but he did help get those people into another facility. But we have that same thing going on, and that's an issue for you guys to think about in the budget. Do we, do we want to continue the abatement of dangerous buildings? Are we going to try to keep people in their homes? Or are we going to just tear them down? One of the, the local amendment you made, by the way, to the dangerous building code was no boarding up of buildings. We don't do that. You're going to either repair it or it's going to be torn down. We're not going to just have you just board it up and say that's good. So, but we don't have resources right now for code enforcement to enter on the property and perform the abatement ourselves and then lean the property. So that's one of the things that I've talked with Ron about in the budget process. Do you want to have money set aside for abatement? Or do we want to partner with other entities to facilitate that? One of the things, for example, you could do would be to create a fund where people could donate money for that kind of use. We used to have a fund for people to donate to help pay for drug and alcohol evaluations for people that had that problem, and then they would repay the court. You could have a similar fund for abatement of dangerous buildings or nuisance abatement. And if you had a fund, then you could use that fund for those purposes, and then those individuals could repay that fund. So those, those things are related to dangerous building. But I, I make dangerous buildings a priority because when they come up, they put people out of doors or, you know, nobody likes to see rats running around and not to have anything against rats. I just, in the city, we're generally frowned upon.
Well, for me, you know, my priorities for you are one, protecting the city from legal claims. We have some issues with things mandated by the state, which I think one was the social, no. Retaliation policy. Legislative changes require update to city policy. That would seem a very high priority. We have to take care of that. And I think there was another one. I think it was the social media. No. It was just retaliation. I think, was there one more that you're required to do by new legislation? I thought I wrote that down.
I guess there's, there's always something to do in response to new legislation.
Right.
Because they never stop messing with the statute, so.
By running a business.
Yeah. I recently went to the city attorneys conference, and they, they do the legislative update. And yes, there are a couple more things that are not yet on this list that we're going to need to address.
Well, for me, I mean, I've marked down social media, development agreement, inclusionary zoning, sign ordinance, retaliation policy, the village's HOA, special events ordinance, annex East Devils Lake State Park, that's just a personal one, and the DUII impound. Those are my priorities. Thank you.
I have just about the same list. I would include housing, except for the excise tax. I'm not sure we're ready for that yet, but...
I'd like to talk more about that.
Yeah.
And the impact it might have. And if it would actually do something, that money together, and could it actually...
Well, yeah.
Help somebody? Because I guess, within that, if we, we shouldn't have big, actually, we got a break at 6:45, right? To go to executive?
Yes.
We have four minutes. That's for another day, but I'm sure Ron would need to talk about if we do that, who takes care of the money? How does it get distributed and, and all that? So it's a, a bigger issue than I want to get into tonight. The TAF property acquisition, we're, we're rolling forward, and all these others, you know, as Counselor Henderson said, nothing's really standing out other than what I've said, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, just jump in.
So I would like to see the, you know, the finance and the, with the TRT collection and that high priority, the one underneath that on page 12. And then I just heard that the franchise agreement with charter, there was a state agreement based upon a late 90s assessment of their total asset value, and at the time, it was individually assessed, and now it's as a whole. And so it's like a very large quantity of money that's going to be dispersed throughout the state. So I don't know if that's, how that, I just heard it right before the meeting. So I, I don't know if that's going to affect our franchise agreement ourselves. I thought it was in the neighborhood of like $150 million or something. I, I, like I said, it was literally right before I came in, but something with how it was assessed in the late 90s, so I don't know.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah.
I haven't heard that yet.
Yeah, I mean, it was just today, Governor Kay Brown, something.
I'd heard the same thing, Counselor, and it's something to do with the repayment of the PERS money, and I think it's $200 million.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Something with charter and being redistributed, so. But yeah, so, and, and agree with the housing assessment, you know, that's important.
That's a good place to take a break, because we need to go down in the hall, I guess, and have an executive. So we're going to be in, are we, are we done? You want to come back and keep talking about this? Counsel? Do you want to keep talking, or would you prefer just to send your ideas to Mr. Appicello? Or do you want to...
I, I think we were set up to basically conclude at 6:45, because I think IT had set it up to end at 6:45.
Work for counsel?
Yeah, I have a few comments, but we can address those later.
Well, coming back, I think we can, you can bend this by a minute or two.
So if, I guess we're going to adjourn and enter into an executive session down the hall?
If you've got a comment or two. Susan, go ahead.
Well, we can't make any decisions now anyway, so I'll just...
I don't want you to feel like you don't have, get your say tonight.
I'm pretty much in agreement with what's been said. Yeah, okay.
All right, well, then we are adjourned.
So Your Honor, what just announced that the executive session is under ORS 192660 to E and F. E is real property transactions, and F is confidential records, and it has to do with the Taft school property acquisition. So that will be adjourning to enter into executive session on that authority.
We are adjourned.